Welcome to the Cape Coral City Council Regular Meeting. Today is November 5th, 2025. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance by Councilmember Lastra.
Thank you, Mayor. Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you with grateful hearts for the opportunity to serve our community of Cape Coral. Grant us the courage to make decisions that uphold integrity and common good. Bless us with wisdom to discern what is right and just, even when the path is difficult. Guide our leadership so that our actions reflect humility, respect, and purpose. And above all, remind us to lead with kindness, to listen, to understand, and to serve with compassion. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor, before I call the roll, I would like to announce that Councilmember Steinke has asked to be excused, and I will mark him so. Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Donnell?
Here.
Kaduk?
Here.
Kilrain?
Here.
Lastra?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Seven present, one excused.
Thank you. Item five, changes to the agenda. Are there any changes to agenda, or I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, just a reminder for anyone who's here tonight and wish to speak during citizens' input. We have comment cards to my left, your right. Please make sure you fill out a card. When we get to that segment of the agenda, the City Clerk will call your name up. So just stay seated until you hear your name called. Thank you. Item six is recognitions and achievements. Six A is a tribute to the Vietnam National Anthem, and which will be performed also tonight. So as we approach Veterans Day, which is coming up, we should take a moment to reflect on the sacrifices made by those who have served our nation. Today, I ask that we honor their courage, their resilience, and their dedication to safeguard our freedoms and democracy. As we all know, freedom isn't free. Please rise if you're able, and I'd like to introduce and bring up Allison from the Oasis High School, who will be doing the National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, Allison, we appreciate that. You did a great, great job. I ask all veterans who are present today in our chambers, if you're a veteran, please raise your hand or stand up so we can recognize you and we can honor your service and sacrifice. Thank you. May we also remember the veterans who are no longer here with us, who paid the ultimate sacrifice. Please remember their families and to make sure that our thoughts and our prayers are with those families. We now invite you to watch a special video tribute that highlights the courage and commitment of our veterans and reminds us the sacrifices that they have made for all of us here today. Could you please play the video?
For the freedom you fought for and the flag you stood for. For the country we cherish and the people we love. For the bravery you showed and the fortitude you held. For the days of dedication and the nights of devotion. For the miles you walked and the skills you learned. For the months of training and the years of service. For the memories you carry of the battles you saw. For the legacy of your courage and the honor you deserve. When our nation needed you most, you answered the call. A deep and unshakable sense of allegiance and responsibility. You were bold, you did not hesitate, and you did not walk away. You were gone for holidays and anniversaries and birthdays because while we were living in peace and freedom, you were fighting for it. Thank you is not enough. We can't repay you, but we will promise to remember. You are the reason we can sing "The Land of the Free" and "The Home of the Brave." You are the heroes among us. You are not forgotten. You are the veterans. We remember your courage, we honor your sacrifice, and we thank you today.
Thank you for joining us as we honor our veterans. As Veteran Day approaches on November 11th, I want to remind everyone about our Veterans Day Parade on Saturday, November 8th at 11:00 a.m. along Cape Coral Parkway. This annual tradition brings our community together to celebrate the men and women who have worn our nation's uniform. I encourage you to attend, bring your family, help us fill the streets with appreciation and pride. If you see a veteran, please take a moment to thank them. Again, freedom isn't free. It's earned and preserved through the courage, sacrifice, and dedication of those who have served. Let us, let our veterans know that your service has not gone unnoticed and will never be forgotten. I know only once a year we may come together to recognize them, but I asked our community as a whole, in your prayers throughout the year, to pray for our men and women who serve our country and to pray for their families because of the sacrifice that they make as well. Thank you, and may God bless our veterans, our city, and the United States of America. Next item on the agenda, recognitions and achievements. Six B is our Community Recognition Award, and I will turn that over to our City Manager.
Today, we recognize a young athlete who's not only making waves on the football field, but also representing the promise and potential of Cape Coral's next generation, Noel Devine Jr. Though still in middle school, Noel Jr. has already demonstrated exceptional talent and discipline across multiple positions, quarterback, running back, and wide receiver. He is not only playing the game, he's changing it. In a single game, he has recorded multiple passing touchdowns, rushed for over 100 yards, and has led his team to victory with poise far beyond his years. His extraordinary performances have caught the attention of college scouts across the country, including West Virginia University and the University of Miami, which have, which have already extended scholarship offers and a rare and remarkable achievement for someone his age. These offers reflect more than talent, they speak to his character, work ethic, and leadership. Noel Jr. is an accomplished track athlete, running the 100-meter dash in just 11.3 seconds, earning him a spot in the AAU Junior Olympics, a testament to elite speed and relentless training. His athletic excellence extends beyond football and track. He's a starting player for the Colusa Middle School Basketball Team, which has captured two Lee County Middle School Boys Basketball Championships for the past two years. He's shown that no dream is too big, no age is too young to begin chasing with heart and humility. For his early excellence in athletics, his positive representation of the city of Cape Coral, and his dedication to growth and sportsmanship, we're honored to present Noel Devine Jr. with the City of Cape Coral Community Recognition Award. Noel, your journey's just beginning, and your community is, your community is behind you every step of the way. Congratulations and thank you.
Congratulations, Noel, on your, on your recognition. Next item on the agenda is approval of amendments. Do we have a motion regarding the amendments from the Special Meeting of October 22nd, 2025?
Motion to approve.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion regarding the amendments to the regular meeting of October 22nd, 2025?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any council discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item eight is business. Eight A is new business. Before we get into that, I do want to read one item that, for the record, that Councilmember, Councilmember, well, I just lost my train of thought, Steinke, had sent since he was unable and knew he was going to be out of town this week, and I wanted to read just a segment of it. Since I will not be there to represent myself when assignments come up, please know that I would be honored to accept the nomination and take my turn to serve as Mayor Pro Tem. Continue my work serving as the Chair of the CRA. Of course, we will not be hearing that tonight. And certainly continue my work representing Cape Coral and the Lee County TDC. I'm hopeful for your support in the last year of my term. And in any way I could attend, I would represent myself personally, I would have here tonight. So I just wanted to read that into the record before we move on with discussions. The first item, eight A, is selection of Mayor Pro Tem, and I will open the floor to accept any nominations for, for Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Kilrain?
Yes, Your Honor, Mayor, I'd like to nominate Councilman Steinke for the position. I think that it's the last year of his first term, and I, he hasn't had the opportunity yet, and I think he'd do a great job there, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other nominations or any other volunteers? Okay, seeing no other lights on, we have a nomination on the floor. We have one position, one nomination, so I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Councilman Steinke for Mayor Pro Tem.
Second.
Is there any other council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the vote.
Long?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is appointment of the Office Manager.
As you are aware, this individual handles the day-to-day operations of the office. We do have Assistant Office Manager in Connie Grigland. So at that time, I will entertain any nominations for Office Manager. Councilmember Kilrain?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate the Mayor to continue to do that process. Since you haven't screwed it up too bad, I think it'd be great to have you continue. Thank you.
Appreciate all of that confidence. Any other nominations for Office Manager? Seeing none, we have one opening and one nomination. I'll entertain a motion for that position.
Motion to approve Mayor for the Office Manager position.
And then, Councilmember Lehman, did I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, we have a motion, a second on the floor. Could you call the roll, please?
Long?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item eight A, number three, is the City Council 2026 meeting schedule. I know we all received a copy of that particular schedule for the next 20, during the calendar year of 2026. I'll open it up for any discussions that you may have. Mr. City Attorney, I see your, your light on, so we'll start with you first.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to bring to your attention, you are technically on hiatus through Tuesday, January 6th. Based upon the proposed schedule that has been presented to you, the first meeting is January 7th. So I don't know if you want to still have that included as your first return meeting. You do have a regular council meeting on January 21 of, of, of the new year. That would still be in, consistent with your rules and the charter and in that regard. So I just bring that to your attention just so that you all are aware, because you are out till the 6th, or you're supposed to be.
So we're on hiatus until the 6th of January?
Yes.
And the meeting that you are talking about is the 7th?
The, the very next day.
The very next day.
Yeah. Awkwardly, yes.
All right, so I guess the question for council is, because I know that the City Manager typically has our one-on-one meetings on Monday and Tuesday. If there's an issue or you want to not have your one-on-ones, or do we want to not include the first meeting there in January? So with that, I'll open up for any discussion on that.
Yeah, I, I'm trying.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I could sit with that meeting on the 6th and just do a one-on-one day before. I mean, I'm okay with that, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I mean, for me, I'm okay coming back a day or so early and doing my one-on-one meetings. That doesn't bother me. Is everybody okay with that? All right. So with that being said, if there's no other questions, I will, Councilmember Kilrain, is your light on from the floor?
Yeah, a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
The calendar?
The calendar, calendar is presented.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is council memberships and invoices, and I will read each one of those. I think we've, we have been a participant of these memberships over the years. The first membership that we are a member of is the Florida League of Cities. That particular organization, we pay $38,490 to be a, a member of that particular organization. Florida League of Mayors, we pay $1,350 for that particular organization. Metropolitan Planning Organization here in Lee County. We are a member and we pay $18,232.09. National League of Cities, we are a member, and that membership fee is $14,025. Southwest Florida League of Cities, we're a member of that organization, and we pay $3,000 a year. And you have the U.S. Conference of Mayors, that we are a member, that we pay $14,840. So that is the six organizations that we have been a participant with for several years. So I will open up any discussion regarding those organizations, or I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Kilrain?
A motion to approve the schedule as presented.
Second.
Is there any other council discussion? Seeing done, we have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we will go on to the next item, which is the Council Liaison and Membership Selections. I have a list here of the current boards and the liaisons that are currently on that particular board. I guess we will start with the first of which is the Affordable Housing Committee. On this particular committee, we have one council liaison position, which is a voting member, is Councilmember Lastra, who is serving at this time. So I will entertain any nominations or volunteers for this particular position. Councilmember Kilrain?
I'd like to nominate Councilman Lastra again for that position. I think she's done a great job there. Thank you.
I'm happy to share if anyone else wants to turn, but, but that's fine, I'll, I'll accept it. Thank you.
All right. Any other nominations? Seeing none, we have one position, one nomination, so I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Councilperson Lastra for that position.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, the next position, we have the Audit Committee. We have one voting member who's a council liaison, currently filled by Councilmember Lehman. And I will open up for any nominations for this position. Councilmember Kilrain?
Yeah, I'd like to again nominate Councilman Lehman for that position.
All right. Any other nominations? Seeing none, we have one position, one nomination. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Councilman Lehman for that position.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Charter School Governing Board. We have one voting member on this particular board, and the council liaison who's on this particular board and position now is Councilmember Kilrain, so I'll open it up for, for any nominations. I'll, since Councilmember Kilrain, hopefully you still want to continue on that particular board, and I'll, if so, I'll nominate Councilmember Kilrain to, to continue serving as our council liaison on the Charter School Governing Board.
Thank you, Mayor, I would like to continue on that. Good experience, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, we have one position, one nominations, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to keep Councilmember Kilrain on the Charter School Governing Board.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
The next item is the Transportation Advisory Committee. Currently, we have five voting members that are on this particular committee now, and we also have one alternate. As far as the five voting members, we have Councilmember Kaduk, Councilmember Kilrain, Councilmember Lastra, Councilmember Lehman, Councilmember Steinke, and I am the alternate. So with that being said, I'll entertain any nominations, or I guess maybe easier could be that any of the existing members, if they're not interested in continuing to be on this board, maybe might be easier to speak up at this time. Councilmember Kilrain?
If no one speaks up, I would nominate the same roster as before in the same positions.
Second.
Agreed.
All right.
But, I mean, if somebody else wants to turn, I'm happy to step aside. But I'm fine staying on it.
Okay.
We have lots to do.
All right. Any other discussion? Let's see, no other lights on. We have the five voting members and one alternate. Again, Councilmember Kaduk, Kilrain, Lastra, Lehman, and Steinke as the voting members. Myself as the alternate. I believe that's what the motion was, is to continue that same format. We have a second, no other discussions.
Mayor, there was no, there was no motion.
So I'll make a motion to appoint the members that are currently, including the alternate.
Okay, and we have a second? Thought we already did that, but I guess not. All right. So now we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, the next one is Community Development Block Grant Committee. Right now, we have one liaison, which is council liaison, which is Councilmember Donnell. So I will open it up for any nominations for this particular position. Councilmember Kilrain?
I'd like to nominate Councilman Donnell for that position again.
Okay, any other nominations? Seeing none, we have one position, one nomination, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Councilman Donnell for that position.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, Metropolitan Planning Organization, this one's a little different. Typically...
You missed number six.
Planning and zoning?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that's your board, right?
I would nominate Councilmember Long for planning and zoning if nobody else is interested. I'll make a motion, too.
And also, we have Councilmember Kilrain as a alternate, is, would that be included in?
Yeah, make the motion to add Councilmember Kilrain as the continued alternate.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, now we'll get on to the Metropolitan Planning Organization. This one's a little different, not that it is set in stone this way, but typically who the voting members on the Transportation Advisory Committee are typically the voting members on the Metropolitan Planning Organization. The caveat to this is, is that the remaining council members, who are not the voting members on the Metropolitan Planning Organizations, are automatically alternates. That way, the, the goal is to get, make sure we have five-member representation at all times at the Metropolitan Planning Organization. at the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Currently, we have the same members who are on the Transportation Advisory Committee as voting members. We have Councilmember Kaduk, Kilrain, Lastra, Lehman, and Steinkie. Myself, Donnell, and Long are listed as alternates. So I'll open it up for any nominations. Councilmember Kilrain.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate, and the participants, and also the backups to those in the same manner it was done before, and I would put a motion into, except.
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any other nominations? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long.
Aye.
Donnell.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Kaduk.
Aye.
Kilrain.
Aye.
Lastra.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, let's move on to National League of Cities. We have one member and one alternate on this particular board. Currently, Councilmember Donnell is the representative, and Councilmember Lastra is the alternate. So I will entertain any motions or any nominations, I'm sorry, for this particular board. Councilmember Kilrain.
Yeah, I nominate same personnel for that.
So Councilmember Donnell as the member, and Councilmember Lastra as the alternate?
Yes.
And is there a second?
Second.
He didn't make a motion, so I'll just make the motion for him.
Not really. No motion to, sorry.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long.
Aye.
Donnell.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Kaduk.
Aye.
Kilrain.
Aye.
Lastra.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we have the Horizon Council. Currently, we have Councilmember Kaduk as our member, and we have Councilmember Kilrain as our alternate, and I will open it up for any nominations for that particular board.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to keep the same two, if they're willing, to Horizon Council.
Second.
Okay?
Yeah, okay with me.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long.
Aye.
Donnell.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Kaduk.
Aye.
Kilrain.
Aye.
Lastra.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, Tourist Development Council. Right now, we have one voting member, Councilmember Steinkie, and I will open up for any nominations for Councilmember Steinkie.
I would, what, you okay to speak?
Yeah.
I would nominate Councilman Steinkie for that position, and I would put in a motion for, to accept him in that position.
Okay. Did I hear a second from Councilmember Donnell? All right. All right, Councilmember Lastra.
Mayor, I would like an opportunity to serve on this, and the reason is because I've been a part of it before in my past work, and I'm very familiar with the grant process. I'm very familiar with what we need here in Cape Coral, and I'm very familiar with what Councilmember Steinkie fought for and has been fighting for for our city, and I would like an opportunity, if my team is agreeable, to have an opportunity to serve on the TDC.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Kaduk.
Thank you. I was going to nominate Councilmember Lastra.
Okay. All right. So I think, since we have Councilmember Donnell?
Is there an alternate position on this, or is just one?
Just one.
Thank you.
Mayor, I believe there's a motion on the floor.
Yeah, I guess, sounds like we might prematurely made the motion, so maybe I'd ask the motion maker if he would withdraw his motion, since we have two nominations. We'll go down the line and see where the majority is.
I withdraw my motion.
In the second, agree?
Agrees.
Okay. All right, so we have two candidates that are vying for the Tourist Development Council. We have Councilmember Steinkie, who had expressed an interest earlier with his email that he provided, and we have Councilmember Lastra. So with that, we'll go down and see where the majority votes are. We'll start with Councilmember Kaduk.
I nominated Lastra.
Steinkie.
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 Lastra.
Sounds like we have four for Councilmember Steinkie, three for Councilmember Lastra. So I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Councilmember Steinkie back to that position.
Mr. Mayor.
Can we verify that? I, I thought I heard someone say same. I have Kaduk for Lastra, I have Kilrain for Steinkie, Gunter for Steinkie, Long for Steinkie, Lehman for Lastra, Donnell for Lastra.
No, Steinkie.
Steinkie.
So it's.
Is that correct, Councilmember Donnell?
Aye, Steinkie.
All right.
Okay, so it was three for Lastra and four for Steinkie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I got. All right. So we have a motion for Councilmember Steinkie. Did I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? Councilmember Long, I see your light on.
Yeah, that was actually before we voted. I was just gonna say, obviously, I have faith that both have served in that position, but I, you know, frankly, I'm impressed with what Councilman Steinkie's been able to do in that position, considering we don't have a voting position, and so, for that reason, I was just hoping to continue that momentum in light of hopefully getting a voting position when the legislation changes next year. Thank you.
Councilmember Kilrain.
Yeah, I'd echo that same reason. Nothing against Councilperson Lastra, but I think the bill's done a lot of work toward that, and the benefits are coming from that, and I think, you know, he deserves the opportunity to see it through, so thank you.
Councilmember Kaduk.
Looking for clarity, I believe we do have a voting position this year on TDC.
We do, we just took over the voting.
Yeah.
Yep, you're correct.
Just correcting.
Yep, you're correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Donnell?
Whatever, Councilmember Kilrain, Long, I just don't like Councilmember Lastra. I find that.
I have thick skin. I'm taller than you two, just saying.
All righty, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long.
Aye.
Donnell.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Kaduk.
Aye.
Kilrain.
Aye.
Lastra.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, the next one is the Coastal and Heartland National Estuary Partnership Policy Committee. Currently, we have Councilmember Kilrain, who is the member of this particular organization as our council liaison, so with that being said, I will open it up for any nominations.
I'll make a motion, if there's no more nominations, to place Councilmember Kilrain back on this organization.
Second.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, we have one position, one nomination. I'll entertain a motion.
Long.
Aye.
Donnell.
No, no. We need a motion.
I gotta get a motion.
I made a motion.
I have a motion from.
A motion.
I made a motion.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Seconded by Long.
All right.
Long.
Aye.
Donnell.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Kaduk.
Aye.
Kilrain.
Aye.
Lastra.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay. Next item that looks like I have on my agenda is 8A1, which is the Affordable Housing Committee. And it looks like we have five positions and five applicants. I'll turn it over to our city clerk to verify that.
So, Your Honor, on our agenda, there could be an error in your script.
Okay.
Under nine, under new business, 8A6, I have listed Resolution 313-25. It is a new business, Blue Water Trust LLC Special Magistrate Decision.
Yeah. Okay.
The order of operations is a little altered tonight because of the annual November items that council has to take care of first, and we've gone through those.
All right, well, let's move on to that item eight, which is number six, Resolution 313-25. Let me, give me a second to find that particular item. Here we go. So this particular resolution, I'll first open it up for any staff comments. I'll open it up, I believe, to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a little bit of background regarding this specific matter. As you may recall, this was originally a request that was brought before you to rezone the property. It was under rezoning case number RZN 24-00005. That was submitted by Blue Water Trust LLC. It's to rezone the property that is located at 1224 Country Club Boulevard and 1306 Country Club Boulevard, from what is professional office, a commercial designated zoning, to residential multifamily loan. This was heard by you all on May 21 of the year 2025. During that hearing, it was unanimous denial of that rezoning case. In response to that denial, the applicant then invoked what is called the Flujer Process, which is Florida Land Use and Environmental Dispute Resolution Act. That's identified within Section 70.51 of the Florida statutes. This is a non-binding dispute resolution where the matter is brought before a special magistrate under that specific provision of the statute. The special magistrate did consider evidence and testimony from city staff and from the property owner, and has written, has issued a written recommendation finding that the city's denial of the rezoning was unreasonable and unfairly burdens the use of the real property. In conjunction with this specific matter, we are required to have this brought before the city council within a 30-day period of time. It is the DSD staff, the city manager, and the city attorney's office positioning that you all should reject the recommendation of that special magistrate, and upon that recommendation, the appropriate written notification will be issued to the applicant. I will also state to you that it would be prudent and wise, and the applicant is here through his counsel, to allow them the three-minute time to provide whatever information that you may need, and with that, I would answer any questions that you may have regarding this specific matter.
So is this input time? Is it just for the individual that filed this, or is this an open public hearing?
No, it's just limited to the applicant themselves or their representative, and it's not for the general public to provide any input on the matter.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that clarity. So at this time, is there anyone here that is representing Blue Water Trust LLC? And if you are, if you'd like to come forward, sir, you'll have three minutes. Please state your name for the record also.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Patrick Stevens. I am an attorney here in Florida, practice primarily down in Marathon. Mr. Mayor, councilmen and councilwomen, I'd like to thank you for your time today and listening to us. I would also like to thank the city attorney's time and their professionalism as we went through this process. You have a great city attorney staff, and they've been wonderful to work with. Just wanted to give a quick roadmap of where we are and how we got here. The applicant filled out an application to rezone, as the city attorney indicated. They then went through the HECS hearing, where the HECS officer indicated, or stated that all criteria were met for the rezoning. We then came to city council, where it was unanimously rejected for the rezoning. Substantive to that, the applicant has retained my office. We filed the procedures through the Florida Land Use and Environmental Dispute Resolution, where a special magistrate was appointed. We had the hearing with the special magistrate, and they have to make a determination whether the denial of our application was a unreasonable and unfairly burdened the applicant's property. That special magistrate has made that determination, that the denial did unfairly burden Mr. George's property, Blue Water Trust property. We were hoping to have the council, or asking the council, to change their decision, follow the magistrate's recommendation. This property, and I understand, and I'm not gonna go through all the evidence that was presented at the prior council meeting, but this is a property on, let's see here, Country Club Boulevard, and it's a vacant lot. The adjacent property is a duplex, property behind the property is duplex, the other adjacent property is duplex. It's vacant lot, all in between all duplexes. Also, as you're driving Country Club Boulevard toward Nicholas Parkway, there's no curb cuts, so you couldn't access that property if we're to be a commercial use. Also, with the size of the property, it's not really going to be viable for a commercial property. So I'm here to answer any questions, but I would like you guys to consider the HECS officer and the special magistrate's recommendation, and reverse your prior hearing. Thank you. Any questions, I'm here for.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'll entertain a motion, and then afterwards, we'll open up for any council discussion. Is there a motion regarding Resolution 313-25?
Just, Mayor, just to clarify, the resolution that's put before us is based, it's a rejection of the magistrate's ruling, and to continue with the process, the same jurisdiction or same designation as you did in the past?
The motion before, yes, the motion before you presently, right now, is for a rejection of the recommendation by the special magistrate.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the resolution.
And that's Resolution 313-25?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, is there a second? All right. I'll open up for council discussion. Councilmember Kaduk?
My light was on from before.
Okay. Councilmember Kilrain?
Yeah, I think that, as we discussed this before, you know, we're very concerned about making sure that we have enough professional and commercial space, and I think that this just fits the opportunity to continue along that path, so that's why I'll be supporting the resolution.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Donnell?
Nay.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is 8B. Thank you, sir, for coming tonight. Move on to 8B, the consent agenda. I open up the consent agenda for council to pull any items. Councilmember Kaduk?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to pull item number 13, which is Resolution 329-25.
All right. Councilmember Lastra?
I was going to pull the same one. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, it looks like we have a total of 15 resolutions on the consent agenda. We've only had the one particular item pulled from the consent, which is Resolution 329-25.
Motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
Second. All right, and Councilmember Kilrain, I guess?
Yeah, I was going to make the motion.
All right. So we, any other discussion on the remaining 14 items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Mayor, I just want to make one mention. I just wanted to bring up a noteworthy, one of the consent items, in that the animal shelter is looking for that additional space. It's going to be on the consent agenda to be approved. They do an excellent job in providing a service to the city and the county that is, I think, unequalled by others, and I think they do it at a minimum of cost with a lot of volunteer services. So I just wanted to give them recognition for that point. Thank you.
Okay. And just to be clear, it's a permissive use agreement, I believe, is what you're talking about. Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Here. Aye. Sorry.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, and we'll go over to Resolution 329-25. I believe Councilmember Kaduk was the first of which to pull that item, so I'll give you the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. I pulled this item because it is, of course, talking about the yacht club, which we know is a hot topic in our community currently, and there's a high-dollar value amount to it. So if staff could please explain what the purpose of this resolution is, that would be great.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. My name's John Osterstock. I'm the Facility Projects Manager. So what this resolution entails is the, it'll constitute the first GMP, the Marine GMP phase of the yacht club project, which would include demolishing the existing docks that are down there, the damaged docks. It'll include installing a approximately 3,000 linear-foot seawall. It'll also include construction of a new boat ramp within the basin, as well as two flushing box culverts. And, yeah, that's basically, and some dredging, sorry, that was the last part of that.
Thank you. And it looks like we'll be doing an amendment to our budget, although some of it is grant-funded. Is that correct?
Yes, some of it is grant-funded.
So an amendment to our 2026 fiscal budget to take out debt?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, my understanding, this will be for the demolition of existing seawalls, all the dockage, and then a replacement of the seawalls. I think we elected not to continue to do the construction at the docks at this time. I just want to clarify that as well.
Yeah, it will not include the installation of new docks at this time.
Okay. All right. Yes. Councilmember Lastra?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to ask the same question to clarify regarding the docks. So for the public, could you also state, is this the, this is what we received our Army Corps permits for back in May?
That is correct.
That's correct. Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Donnell?
I don't, I think it would be important on this item, because I don't know, I'm pretty sure you guys are getting hammered. There's this, there's this number out there, 200 and something million is hammering us. But this piece right here is something separate, but above, or tag to whatever we end up putting there. This is something that has to be done, and we still have to deal with this piece. So are they two separate parts, just so everybody's clear on it, and don't think that this is it?
Yeah, no, this was included in that whole number, so this is not extra beyond that, that budget number that was put out there, $200 million.
The city manager, just somewhere, because he mentions the boat slips, and I heard about that one, and I understand about seawall, there's somewhere on the website, and I'm looking at how we did the JC part, please, excellent, about the report, that we can just kind of have a flow of this, so we can point people to it, so they can track it, because I'm pretty sure you guys are receiving it, too.
Yes, sir, we do, we do have a website for this, and at your next COW, we are going to be presenting kind of the history through here. There was some misunderstanding in the community. I think the mayor during our COW on this topic had asked about whether or not this was going to include the electric and utilities for the docks, and we had said no. And I think some people mistook that to mean that that work wasn't even included in the 200 million. So clearly was some miscommunication or misunderstanding, but this is all part of the original.
And we're going to have that so the public can access it, and they can answer questions for themselves and research and follow it.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Councilmember Kilrain?
Yeah, just to, Councilman Donnell, just to help clarify, I think the original number was like around 24 million, and if we wanted to do the additional upland stuff, it's going to be another 30, it would be 35. And then in addition to that, there was another 85 and another 95 on top of it. That got us up to the two and a quarter, and I think that's the way the numbers go. So this was, this was something we needed to do upfront. And don't we need this for the boathouse, too, to be able to sustain the boathouse capability down there? So this is almost a no-brainer to get this done first.
Any of the upland facilities that need to be constructed, this is the contingent precedent for all of them. You know, when it comes to putting in footers, when it comes to doing electric, any type of excavation, this is step one. And so no matter whether or not when we put it out for some type of RFP, or we scale it back, if that's not successful, this still needs to happen. And, and, you know, the numbers, I've asked staff in the presentation for next week to deconstruct the total, so that you all have an idea of what are the docks in the Marina? What is the, you know, the community center? What is the parking garage? What is the Harbor Master Building? What are the general site? This way, you all can have an idea of exactly that, that number, because there's a lot of people like, it's this, it's that, you know, I've seen some people out there saying it's going to be 300 million, I mean, so we're going to break it down and lay it all out.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. So with that being said, no other lights on, I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 329-25.
Motion to approve.
Sir?
Any other council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, let's move on to item 8C, appointments to boards and committees, first of which is Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Madam City Clerk, I'll turn it over to you to let us know how many vacancies we got and how many applicants.
Yes, Your Honor, for the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, we had placed on the agenda that we had four vacancies with five applicants. At the moment, we were about to publish the packet, we learned of a resignation, so it is actually, I have five vacancies and five applications. It would be up to council's discretion when making a selection, if they choose to fill that fifth vacancy, to do so, but please know that that fifth vacancy would have a different expiration date than the others. So four would be for two years, and one would be for one year. There are numerous applicants in the audience, if you'd like me to call them up for interviews.
Okay, I'll leave that up to council. It sounds like we have five positions that are open, five applicants. The caveat is four of the positions are for two-year terms, and one position would be for a one-year term. So do we want to give each applicant one minute to introduce themselves, and then we can make that decision after that? Good? So if you could call each applicant up, Madam City Clerk, for one minute to introduce themselves.
Kelly Greer?
So excited to get to be first.
Go ahead.
My name's Kelly Greer. I am a current resident of the city. I have lived here for the last 15 years. I also am in the housing industry, multifamily side, in real estate marketing. I work for a top 15 organization across the country, operating today in over 40 states, so I have an extensive amount of experience in this space. My company's portfolio does represent affordable, conventional, student, and a variety of different segments.
Okay, thank you very much.
Julie Harrigan?
Hi. Julie Harrigan, I've lived in Cape Coral for 40 years. Am I too close? And I'm applying for one of the, like, citizens-at-large, not somebody with a lot of expertise. I've served on city commissions in the 90s, and there was a financial advisory commission and the Stormwater Task Force Commission. I worked for the city and retired from the city in 2007, and since then, I've done a lot of volunteer work. I've been trustee here and there, been in administration. I have a degree in, I have a bachelor's science degree in management, and I just have a lot of concern for people that are struggling right now and trying to find places to live with the salaries that we make in Cape Coral. The facts are the facts, you know, you can only, you make what you make, and how can we make that a better place for, to keep all of our residents here, both the young families and for elderly?
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Jack Schwartz is next on the list. He had a prior engagement, but wanted me to express to council he's very interested in serving. Natasha Shaw?
Hi. So I grew up in Cape Coral. I've been here all my life. I actually am a Realtor in Cape Coral, just like Keri. I work with a lot of first-time homebuyers as well as renters, so basically, I would like to be a part of the conversation and kind of bridge that gap between policy and affordable housing. Yeah, I don't know, I, my son plays for Cape Junior, so he is really good friends with Noel, too, and I just want to make it so that everyone could experience Cape Coral and see what it's like to live here, as well as making sure that the ones that currently live here and serve our community is, are able to continue to, of course, live here. So, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Van Houten?
Hello, guys. I was just in front of you guys last May or June, and I got appointed to do a partial term for six months, and I've had a lot of fun, I've learned a lot about how the city works from the government side with the housing, and I would just like this opportunity to continue onto a new term and be part of the conversation, as someone else said, as, from a renter's point of view, because that's how I've spent most, most all my adult life. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
That's the five.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll open it up for, for any discussions or motions, so we'll start with Councilmember Kilrain.
Yeah, City Clerk, the position you mentioned, we had two, two years, two one-years.
Four, two years.
Four, two years, okay.
Yeah, one, one year.
Okay. I, I would make the motion to nominate the four represented here today in a two-year positions, and the one that was absent in a one-year position.
Second. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Kaduk?
My light was on, but Kilrain beat me to it.
Okay. Any other discussion? It sounds like we have a motion on the floor for Greer, Harrigan, Shaw, and Van Houten for two-year terms, and Schwartz for a one-year term. Madam City Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Long?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, next on the agenda is Health Facilities Authority. It appears that we have three vacancies and two applicants. Madam City Clerk, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, Your Honor, that is the case. We have two applicants that are here today, if council wishes to interview them, Ms. Sittadino and Mr. Jackson.
Okay, or, either, do we want to give them one minute, or since we got three positions and only two applicants, entertain a motion, so whichever.
I'd like to just hear from them, but I would make the motion to...
I'm going to at least make them stand up, because I know Councilmember Donnell likes to, likes to put a face to a name. So why don't we go ahead and bring them up for one minute?
I was trying Dr. Donnell for a minute, so...
Sure. Jennifer Sittadino? Jennifer?
Right up here, ma'am, at the podium.
Thank you. I'm Jennifer Sittadino. I have been a resident of Cape Coral for 18 years. I have served on the Health Facilities Authority in the past, and my experience in the past, I have, I'm a nurse practitioner. I've worked in the Lee Health System. I've also taught at, I still do teach at FSW and Nova Southeastern. I have my PhD in conflict analysis and resolution in healthcare organizations, and again, I said I'm a nurse practitioner, so I think the experience will be beneficial.
Thank you.
Edmund Jackson?
Evening, council. Thank you for having me here today. I'd like to serve on the board because I've done this prior. I've been in healthcare for a number of years, been with Lee Health now for a little over 10 years now, and positions such as a phlebotomist, monitor technician, and currently at FSW to pursue an AS, hopefully in respiratory care or cardiovascular tech. I've done the prereqs pretty much for both at this point, and I've served on the Health Facilities Board prior as well. So I think, even though I'm certainly not a master at healthcare, nor am I a master at serving, I think the experience I've gained is something I look to build upon, because as we know, experience is gained through hard work, but it's also gained through time. And with that, I yield my time.
Thank you.
That's all of the applicants.
Thank you. So I'll entertain a discussion or a motion. Councilmember Kilrain?
Motion to approve both candidates for the vacancies.
And do I have a second?
Have a second.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
My understanding, Madam City Clerk, you're re-advertised for the third vacancy. It's still open?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, Community Development Block Grant. This Citizens Advisory Board, we have three vacancies and I believe three applicants.
That is correct. We have three applicants, Aisha Glassford, Martha Hill, and Kevin McGrail. Both Ms. Glassford and Ms. Hill indicated that they were unable to attend this evening, but are very eager to serve, and Mr. McGrail is present if council has any questions.
All right, brought everybody else up tonight. Mr. McGrail, if you'd like to come up for one minute, you have anything to say or introduce yourself?
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Kevin McGrail. I'm a 46-year resident, 36-year resident in Cape Coral. I am currently the chairman of the CDBG Black Grant Board, and as I've mentioned to our liaison, Councilman Donnell, it's one of the best feel-good boards in this city. You get an opportunity to work with all those organizations that reach out and help our community, and I truly enjoy my time on this board, and I look forward to another very successful year on it. So thank you for your consideration, and as I said, I can't say enough good things about the organizations that operate in our city to help our citizens. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sounds like the other two individuals aren't here today, but we have three applicants, three vacancies. I'll open up for any discussion or a motion. Councilmember Kilrain?
Motion to approve all three applicants.
Any other council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to 8D, unfinished business. D1's follow-up items for council, we don't have any listed, follow-up items for city management. There's none listed. Item nine is ordinances and resolutions. We do not have any quasi-judicial hearings tonight. Item nine B is legislative public hearings, first of which is ordinance 46-25. Madam City Clerk, please read titles.
Ordinance 46-25, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, amending the city of Cape Coral, Florida comprehensive plan by amending policy 1.15 of the future land use element by amending the Seven Islands sub-district, providing for severability and an effective date.
Okay, thank you. We'll turn it over to Chad. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Chad Boyko for the Record Principal Planner with the Cities Plan Division. This is an adoption hearing for ordinance 46-25. You heard this roughly 90 days ago or so at the transmittal hearing. This amends a couple of items within the Seven Islands sub-district within our comprehensive plan. It eliminates the 110,000 square foot of commercial, instead goes to FAR, and then it just, it makes the, the language for the Seven Islands more palatable to the concept plan that has been developed over the past couple of years. That will be going before, going before you within the development agreement in the next few months. I'm here for you for the questions.
Okay, thank you. I now open up the public, final public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 46-25, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there, I'll entertain a motion for ordinance 46-25.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other council discussion? Councilmember Kilrain?
No, I just think that it's a great project. I like the opportunity that this does, it expands the opportunity to take advantage of the developer in this case, and I think it's going to be a great project. I think it's gonna be a great project. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Seeing no other discussion, we have a motion, second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, ordinance fifty-five dash twenty-five. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing, second and final public hearing.
Ordinance fifty-five dash twenty-five, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, amending the land development code of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, Article Four, Zoning Districts, Chapter One, General Provisions, Section four point one point six, uses by zoning district, use hierarchy, amending the land development code of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, Article Four, Zoning Districts, Chapter Two, Specific Regulations by District, Section four point two point fourteen, Mixed Use Seven Islands District, amending the land development code of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, Article eleven, Definitions, Chapter One, General Provisions, Section eleven point two, Definitions, Regarding permitted uses in the MX seven, Mixed Use District, Providing for Severability and an Effective Date. The second and final public hearing will be November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, thank you. That was ordinance fifty-five dash twenty-five?
Yes.
I'll turn it over to Seth.
All right. Once again, Chad Boyko for the Record Principal Planner with the Cities Plan Division. This is sort of the companion land development code change, this mixed-use Seven Islands sub-district. This will, this once again will facilitate the master concept plan development that has been occurring for the past couple of years. We're changing the zoning code that was developed for the Seven Islands project. We're gonna do several things within this. We're going to add and remove some uses from the mixed-use seven district. We're gonna delete references to the Seven Islands Master Plan D1 that was really approved over ten years ago. And since then, things have changed with Seven Islands and the scope of development and market changes facilitating these changes that are necessary. We're gonna require all development to be consistent with the new master concept plan that'll be presented with the development agreement. We're clarifying the height within the land development code for the Seven Islands, and we're allowing occupiable rooftops. And then we're cleaning up language that may not have fit, that may not fit the new master concept plan. And then we are eliminating restrictions on drive-through facilities within Seven Islands. First, we're adding the following uses. The first is single-family. We allowed a single-family development within Seven Islands, except that we had a glitch where we didn't allow it within our use table. We're allowing for mobile food vendors so that we can have food trucks on the Seven Islands, allowing for professional services. And then we're allowing for heliports and heli stops as part of a special exception. And then we are eliminating the, the following uses, which are research and development, institutional. Those aren't really uses that we're looking at for a destination center with the Seven Islands. We're defining height. When the D1 concept was originally thought of, the idea was that you would have eight stories of occupiable space within these buildings with a maximum height of a hundred fifteen feet. So now what we're doing is we're clarifying that to say that the first two stories of that height will not count towards the eight stories. So you can have two stories of parking and then eight stories of occupiable space within those buildings. You will still be capped at a hundred fifteen feet in height for all of those buildings. Given the, the geography of the geometry of the Seven Islands, it's difficult to put surface parking that is not in, within a building, because you, they're kind of narrow. So you do have to have those first two floors of parking, and also two for also floodplain protection prevention as well. Then the second thing we're doing with height is allowing for occupiable rooftops. These are gonna be spaces on top of buildings that can be activated for social uses, and we will not count the occupiable rooftops as height, so long as they do not contain any enclosed structures or buildings with, within those occupiable rooftops. The new master concept plan has been developed over the past couple of years for this. We're eliminating references to the old D1 concept plan. The new development will tie to the new master, master concept plan. We're eliminating some language that was there for access, circulation, and commercial square footage that's no longer relevant. And then we are eliminating a restriction on drive-through lanes. That was part of the original zoning district. We will now have a development agreement that will apply restrictions on drive-through facilities to whatever types of uses that we want to have drive-throughs. There perhaps a coffee shop or something along those lines. So really, that's really the gist of all the changes. We recommend approval of the request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. I'm here for any further questions.
Thank you. I now open up the first public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance fifty-five dash twenty-five, please come forward.
Hi, this is Mayor and Council. So I'm glad we see that we had the approval seven zero on planning and zoning, because I'm Commissioner Sedentor on planning and zoning. We talked about this in detail. We had the same presentation. We're hoping that it gets approved. We also, on my other position for patrol, we patrolled that north area, and we're looking forward to seeing that whole thing developed. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak during public hearing on ordinance fifty-five dash twenty-five? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a, we're not gonna do a motion. Is there any council discussion on this? Mr. City Manager?
I just wanna point out to you and highlight one item on the presentation tonight. More recently, it was a focus of an unwanted need in the community as part of our mobility plan. You see in this presentation that this developer is going to be filling some of those needs and has actually asked us to include vertiports, which are also known as heliports, as part of this project. And so, even though members in the community think that the vision that we're trying to accomplish with the developments in our community may not be needed, or may not be something that government should be looking towards, this is a prime example. We're not even a few months into our mobility plan, and we're amending a code to allow vertiports in a project coming to us soon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other discussion by council, this is the second and final public hearing, which is set for November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Just a reminder, last call for any comments, cards, if you wish to participate in citizens' input, that'll be coming up shortly. Nine D is introductions, first of which is ordinance fifty-one dash twenty-five. Madam City Clerk, please read title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance fifty-one dash twenty-five, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, amending the land development code of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, Article Three, Development Review, Chapter One, Development Review Procedures, Sections three point one point two and three point one point three, amending the land development code of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, Article Ten, Subdivisions, Chapter One, Subdivisions, Sections ten point one point three, ten point one point five, and ten point one point six, regarding administrative approval of plats, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, is there any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, let's move on to ordinance fifty-six dash twenty-five. Madam City Clerk, please read title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance fifty-six dash twenty-five, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, amending the land development code of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, Article Five, Development Standards, Chapter One, General Requirements for All Development, Section five point one point eight, sidewalks, alleys, and other right-of-way improvements, regarding the institutional zoning district, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, let's move on to ordinance fifty-seven dash twenty-five. Madam City Clerk, please read title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance fifty-seven dash twenty-five, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, amending the city of Cape Coral, Florida comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from multifamily to downtown mixed land use for property described as lots nine, ten, and eleven, block three fifty, unit seven, Cape Coral subdivision. Property located at sixteen twenty, southeast forty-sixth street, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, move on to ordinance sixty-one dash twenty-five. Madam City Clerk, please read title and set the public hearing date.
Ordinance sixty-one dash twenty-five, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, amending city of Cape Coral ordinance forty-one dash twenty-five, which amended ordinance thirteen dash twenty-five, which amended ordinance one dash twenty-five, which amended ordinance sixty dash twenty-four, which adopted the city of Cape Coral operating budget, revenues and expenditures, and capital budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, by increasing the total revenues and expenditures by a total of thirty-eight million, seven hundred sixteen thousand, four hundred forty-seven dollars, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. Any discussion by staff or council? Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. If I'm reading this correctly, we overspent our budget by fifteen percent.
I'll get, we'll provide an answer.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other discussion, we'll move on to item ten, citizens' inputs. Maximum, maximum to sixty minutes, except for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government, three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record. Please stay seated. City Clerk will call you up by the cards that received that from the box that you submitted the cards.
Donald Hayslit and Mallory Wright. Mallory Wright?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for hearing me out. I live in southwest or southeast Cape Coral. I've been here five years, and my neighborhood is pretty squared away. The only problem I have is the trash containers stay out all week. I mean, it's a blight on my neighborhood, and I would like for you to do something about it. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Alvarez Wada and Rick Stoltz.
Okay, first thing I would like to talk about is yacht club. Are you guys really out of your minds? Really? Really going in debt for a yacht club? Us citizens are totally against this, and yet you guys continue to give everybody raises. You council people want raises, and yet you wanna go in debt on the yacht club. Think about that. Okay, second of all, we just wanted back to where it was, like a nice rec club, pickleball courts, and maybe a pier, and a, of course, the boat ramp, and that would cost probably half of the amount of money. Do you guys really know what budgeting means? Because I really don't believe you do. Okay, I've been a branch manager all my life. I retired at the age of fifty-five. Okay, I went through the ups and downs of the two thousand and eight crash, okay, with my bank and all that stuff, but I survived. I survived because you know what? I put money away, and I saved my money for hard times. Okay, you people don't. Okay, all you know how to do is spend our money. Okay, I wanna let the people know that the reason why they don't know how to budget is because their top administration payroll is roughly at five million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, and this does not include any raises. And council wants a raise, but there's no money, since you give it to all of our top administrators, and then you just gave the CM a seven point five increase. Well, you should have thought about that before you wanted raises. Us citizens will not, will not vote for this for you. And if you think you are, you are just a little bit crazy. And by the way, it all starts at the top. Why don't you go ahead and start cutting at the top, and maybe y'all can get some raises. And by the way, it's called the good old boys' club, because there's only one woman in the top administration. Thirdly, Mr. CM. Okay, let's talk about last week and what happened. Okay, a lady came upset, approached the podium because of an ID issue. Okay, and again, and once again, it just shows that you people don't care. Rachel, you are the most, one, most person that I was disappointed in, when all of them, when you said that that's nothing out of the ordinary, and most agreed by presenting your work IDs. Okay, there's a big difference between work IDs and Florida IDs. Okay? So that's my point. Okay, very disappointing in you, and always disappointing in the rest of the people. Okay, but today, they didn't, we didn't have to show IDs, so it must have worked. Okay, so now what's the next thing? Okay, and then, ID issue. Mr. CM abruptly mumbles under his breath, "Oh, well, you shouldn't be driving without an ID." Really? Coming from a city manager, something so arrogant and disgusting and disrespectful. Okay, we will remember that. And first, it's gonna be the mayor out, and then it's gonna be the CM out. And why should you get raises when you don't even listen to us, just like the J.C. Park? What is it now? It's just a bunch of dirt, because you people can't get your act together.
Keep your applause to yourself, please.
Rick Stoltz and Kevin McGrail.
Hello, I'm Rick Stoltz, forty-seven-year resident of Cape Coral. All of that time in District Four, two different houses, twenty years in both of them. I'd like to start off with a couple things, City Manager. I actually miss you in the Public Works Department. You communicated with me. You got back to me quickly. I miss that. Ms. Lastra, you're my, you're my district councilperson. I was at your first council meeting, or town hall meeting, when you was first term. I gave her a couple things. They got done. I'm glad to see you back up there.
Thank you, sir.
Couple weeks ago, you guys talked about pickleball and tennis. Mr. Donnell said he doesn't play either one of them. Don't let them get you on a ping-pong table. I'm gonna tell you that right now. He'll hustle you. But a couple concerns I'd like to say today is the yacht club. First question I have is, when that first hundred million dollar estimate came out, where did that come from? And would we have tore the buildings down had we known it was gonna be three hundred million? That's, that's a good part of my question there. In my opinion, that mar, the marina part, as it was passed tonight, needs to be done, needs to be done as quick as possible to the plan. Do we need a parking garage down there? Yeah, but not as, not as big as is planned. Half, half that size would be great. What I feel we need down there is a pool again, and a larger community center than what was down there. Today's architecture, you could build that thing to not duplicate, but look like the old yacht club used to. You'd make a lot of people happy with doing that. Brief conversation with councilperson Lastra on Facebook was, I mentioned, I mentioned the, the part about the community center, and she says, "Well, the golf course would be a great place." Both places would be a great place. We don't need to build these big ones. We don't need to funnel four hundred thousand people to yacht club. Build small community centers so everybody can use them. Other topic, and I know this is a county, county issue, but it's the bridge. The eastbound span built in eighty-nine. I looked at the engineering reports. It's got a grade of ninety-eight percent, which is phenomenal for that age of a bridge. Why we're not keeping that as a pedestrian-only bridge, I'll never know. That should have been done. You'd have a forty-foot-wide pedestrian path for bikes and pedestrians. You're gonna have eight foot on each side. By the time that's done, e-bikes are gonna run you over. So, I'm a little upset with that. My last topic is Hudson Creek. Thirty-five hundred homes, twenty-five single-family homes. My main question is, the twenty-five hundred single-family homes, will they all have to pay the impact fee, or is that a hundred million dollars lost when we made the deal for let them build that up there? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Kevin McGrail, thirty-six-year resident and a former councilman. I live in Cape Coral, and I'm very proud to say that. This has been a great city for my family, and one that I'm very happy to be a resident of. The reason I'm here, I'm on a couple of the boards, the Affordable Housing Committee, and I'm on the CDBG Block Grant Board. And basically, we had a, I'm here as a citizen, though. I'm not here as a board member. I'm here to tell you, we've had a pretty good discussion the last couple of years for accessory dwelling units. And the whole concept of that on our board discussion is, let's use it for the families who are looking to keep their ill parents, or children, or whatever in with the family unit. By allowing accessory dwelling units to support the families, it'll allow our residents to age gracefully with their families. I'm glad I have the city attorney here. What came through every discussion is what we want is support of those family units with ADUs. We do not want them to turn into VRBOs times two. Okay? So, it's absolutely critical that our city attorney helps craft something. If you're gonna move them forward, which I would recommend, make sure they're crafted to support the families, which was our intent all along. The second thing I put there was, I'm on the Charter Review Commission, too, and that's, did a lot of work, and I appreciate, I watched your committee of the whole meeting. I watched your committee of the whole meeting. I would encourage you to please move forward with those basic corrections, you know, like the thing for the mayor pro tem. All those little things that really should have been cleaned up and never were. Please vote those through quickly. The 600-pound gorilla in the room is gonna be your pay, okay? And all I can tell you as a citizen is never lose sight of the fact that the citizens should always be at the apex in this city. I've lived here for 36 years and I've been so proud to say it because the councils have recognized the citizens are absolutely, need to be, the ones that work with the council. What happened prior in 2023 was one of the most shameful things I've ever experienced in my city and that's why I sat on the board. Hopefully, we can correct it moving forward. I would encourage you to do your homework. If you have any questions, you know how to find me. Thank you all very much for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Lisette Fiallo and Julia Atari.
Hi, good evening to everybody. I'm Ms. Fiallo. I am here for Richard Miller. I want to say to, you know, everybody in, in the table know what about. He lied to me. He used discrimination with Latin or Hispanic people. He's using harassment to me and my family. He, he is follow all property under my name and my last name. I tell you guys to each one, no more lie to the resident. Rasher Cadu, John Gunter, Todd Holland, Joey Lopez. Don't more anymore. I have, that I have to find a lawyer last, like, last time you tell me you need to find a lawyer. This is unrespect to me. You need to listen to the resident. We pay taxes and we pay you high salary and you, you take advantage as your position. Everybody take advantage of the position. If you don't want work, write and listen to the resident. In Cape Coral, get out and go home. You need listen the resident. You, we pay high taxes. And your salary, your salary for everyone is coming from my tax, the, the resident paid to you and you take high, high salary. So each one has to listen the resident. No more lie was last time unrespect to me. Say you need to find a lawyer. I need respect to me because I'm living, I am resident in this city and living in freedom and I need respect. That was respect to me every single time when I'm meeting here and going to be here, okay? Because your salary is coming from my taxes. You charge to each resident in the northeast of Cape Coral $35,000 for assessment in water and, and the seawater. We are not rich people. People losing the houses, people renting the houses. And Richard Miller, it is using harassment to me. He has police reports. I have police report from him because he's follow my family, follow my twice. Last two or three day, follow two more to my property under my name and my last name. And I'm here proof that he using harassment. This is illegal in my neighborhood and he don't do nothing for, for them. This is the proof around my.
Thank you, ma'am.
Nothing happened with them. It's only with me because I am Hispanic people.
Thank you.
He using harassment to me. Be lawyer.
Thank you.
Again, I come behind you.
Thank you.
Somebody, somebody should help you. This is Julia. How are you? Back again. So my problem tonight is very simple. It's that I feel you guys are back to square one. We have been fighting for you to listen to the citizens. But the spending is out of control in this city. It's insane. We have more houses on the market, more people leaving. We don't have money to finish the projects. I went downtown to an event the other day. It looks like a garbage dump. I mean, you guys have a, what are you doing with the CRA? Isn't that supposed to make the community look better? I went by Chicago Pizza. It looks like a dump. It's terrible. I don't think anybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing except raising taxes. And yes, you didn't raise the military, but everybody I talked to got their tax bill and it went up. That's a miracle. How did that happen? It's terrible. I did, however, want to give you, Mr. Mayor, a number called 9925-002728. And my message is this. If you're gonna lie about someone, they're gonna tell the truth about you. Thank you.
Donald Haislett.
What was honestly very nice hearing all you wonderful people speak. I'd like to thank all the law enforcement officers that are actually honest. I haven't lied to anyone about nothing. This is a complete mental health evaluation to absolve the fact that your cops lied, under oath, committed perjury. You guys sit by sadly and just ignore like it didn't happen. I brought it to Mike's attention, Jennifer's attention, meaning, Mike, you don't have to ignore me, brother. I know exactly who you are. You gentlemen and ladies are responsible for us, we the people. You spend our money on whatever the hell you want to. I'm not happy because of the way that I was treated. I'm an innocent man fighting and proving that I'm innocent. When do you guys stand up and make these people explain what they did? Answer for their crimes. I didn't commit any. And I am very passionate about being assaulted by the police, having guns jammed in my face for no reason. Nobody can give me a legitimate reason except blame me for their nonsense. And I would like to know why. You are responsible for the police department, sir. 100% of it. You're responsible for the entire city and everybody sitting up there and these two sitting here and their staffs. Staffs, whatever. I am very angry with every one of you. I'm disappointed. I've been here 14 years and you turned paradise into hell for me. And I'd like to know why, as a human being, you guys would even consider this nonsense acceptable? Am I not deserving of an answer? You don't feel that you should have to respond? Nobody? I'm not crazy? I'm not being disrespectful as I have been disrespected? Nothing? You're an attorney, sir. You can tell Mike how much this is gonna cost the city because this is gonna cost you dearly. Each and every one of you that is involved, I will make sure that the attorney will sue you. And I will do my best to make sure the federal government arrests every single one of you that are guilty of a crime. And you know that. I'm not running. I'm not going anywhere. Everybody knows what they did. And you can sit there with your air. It's Mike. It's gonna be a very big check, brothers and sisters.
Thank you.
Your Honor. Your Honor, we're checking the box for any additional comment cards.
I'm sorry?
We're checking the box for any additional comment cards. We'll just be one more moment.
Okay.
Kyle Lahamadu and Marie Kavanaugh.
Good afternoon, Kyle Lahamadu, District 7. I want to talk about a few things. First one is the utilities expansion project. Obviously, I received my notice in the mail, like many of other northeast, whatever section we're in, residents did. And question I have is, I am being billed more money than my neighbor across the street who has the exact same frontage. I back up to the Yellow Fever Creek Preserve and my lot goes a little bit deeper towards the preserve. I am getting the exact same service that my neighbors across the street are getting with the exact same frontage, yet I'm paying roughly about 5,000 more. And somebody else is also on that side of the block and is paying 5,000 more. And I would like to have a valid reason why, because it does not make any sense to me. You're not paying for anything different on my lot than the neighbors across the street from me who don't have extra depth. If my lot was 50 feet deep or 5,000 feet deep, it does not change the cost of what it costs you to put the utilities in. Meanwhile, I'm paying 5,000 more. So if anybody could explain that to me, I'd really like a valid answer because we're gonna start getting a lot of the neighbors on the block who are just finding out about this. So that would be great. Then I'm gonna go on to the financing. So my bill is $37,395.60 if I pay it by March 31st. If I pay it by July 31st, it goes up roughly $1,000. If I, if I choose to finance it on a 20-year term, I will end up paying $91,660. If I do it on a 25-year term, I'll pay $104,575. And if I do it on a 30-year term, which is the default to my knowledge, so people that don't pay attention to it, my bill is over triple the cost at $117,480. So that is shocking and I can't even believe when it gets to the people in Northwest, what it's gonna be at that time. I remember Patty Cummings talked about that in a meeting. I don't know if some of you remember that. You were in the room. So that's just one thing I wanted to talk about. Then I also received this in the mail. This is about the utilities expansion. And I would like to know, I'm putting in a public records request. I'd like to know how much this costs to produce and mail out to all the residents. I don't understand why this was needed. I, it's just pissing away of more money. I don't understand. You could have done a postcard with QR code that took everybody to the website. So I want to see what this actually costs. That would be greatly appreciated. Then I'm gonna move on to J.C. Park. I asked for copies of the Fortress Secured LLC subcontractor contract with all the additional subcontractors. I was told that I have to pay for those subcontractors' time to get those contracts. One bill is for $2,500 and the other one is for $673. To my knowledge of the statute, I can only pay you guys.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, my name is Marie Kavanaugh. And first I wanna talk about some records requests. I put in a records request, R104554-101525. And basically what it was, was requesting all credit card, city-issued credit card records for the city attorney, the city manager, Connie Baron and Mark Mason. There might have been another one in there. And I got one charge and I said from January 1st, I believe it was October 15th. There was, of all these people, only one person used that credit card for one stay up in Sarasota at a luxury waterfront hotel? Just asking. And then they wrote back and said I have, they have, they've supplied all the records that are necessary. I don't think that's right. And then we have records request, R105, 104556-101525, which is now 21 days without an answer. I requested the expense reports for everybody on the council and whatever else, there were a couple others in there too, from January 1st to October 15th. Again, 21 days, nothing. You wonder why people have conspiracy theories. It kind of gives you the impression, what are they hiding? What are they hiding? But, and I also would like an update. I noticed on October 30th, the request for proposal for Bimini East, you know, ended. But I can't see anywhere on there where any bids were accepted or what the status was. It's just kind of a, there's no records or something to that, something really blatant, blatantly. I want to know where that is. Did you get anybody? And if not, what do you intend to do about it?
That's the last of the comment cards.
Okay, I'll open it up for council discussion, Councilmember Laster.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Wright, if you will call 311, you can report that through 311. The cans that are being left out, if they're being left out like all week long or all month long, you can absolutely report that and code enforcement will investigate that. So I just wanted to make sure you were aware.
Yes, the problem with that is you have to give your name and address.
Sure, sure, yeah. Yes, you do. So that's okay. Have a seat, sir. So what I'm gonna recommend then is why don't you email me? And then if you email me the issues that you're having, I'll report it on your behalf for you. No problem. Ms. Alvarez, you spoke about Ms. Kavanaugh's experience that she had a few weeks ago when we had our council of the whole meeting. And we've admitted, our city manager admitted and sent an actual apology to Ms. Kavanaugh that our officers made a mistake by requesting her ID. So I don't know if you, if you watched that in our, in our meeting, the meeting afterwards. But our city manager also issued an email apology to Ms. Kavanaugh to state that we were in error and apologized for that to her. You're also referring to the yacht club. I don't know, again, if you watched our Cal meeting a few weeks ago when we actually discussed the yacht club. Majority of us up here gave direction to staff to bring back some potential RFPs, P3 opportunities. Mr. City Manager, can you clarify that for me, what council had asked, especially regarding the ballroom, the marina and the parking garage?
Absolutely. Staff was directed to put out a request for information to see if there are any potential P3s out there or investors or developers that would like to assist with us in doing that development. We have not done that yet. We're waiting to close up the Bimini so that we're not having conflicting proposals of that magnitude out there. But we're down that road and that one's, we also have the, the parking lot as well.
Okay, thank you. So in lieu of us taking out any more debt, council gave that direction for us to put a request for information out so that we can potentially get some investors so that we, me, you, residents, taxpayers, we don't pay for that cost. I know that Mr. Schultz talked about the building. I won't, I can't change that that building's gone and I'm sure we don't know what we don't know. But I think that the majority of us up here would like to see this burden not be on us, the taxpayers. We'd prefer it to do a partnership, a business partnership. So stay tuned on that. Mr. Schultz, you talked about the yacht club and I cannot take credit for what you stated. That's actually David Halsey who read it in the, in The Breeze. Someone wrote an editorial that had the great idea to potentially move the swimming pool and community center to the old golf course. November 13th, we are having a meeting. I really hope you will be here. I will confirm during reports if we are actually moving that meeting here to City Hall. I'm hoping that we will, only because I anticipate it's gonna be a pretty crowded room. I've gotten a lot of feedback from residents who want to attend and I hope you will too, to give feedback on what's going to go there. That's a great opportunity. Looking forward to it. And thank you for the kind words. Let's see, Mr. McGrath, you know how I feel about ADUs. You know, you know how I feel about those. I think they're important generationally within our city. I think they're important generationally within our city. Ms. Fiallo? I believe you came to our COW, and I believe that your issue was the garage, and, and the garage that was, a garage conversion that was not in compliance? Because I think we all received your email, and I also think during the COW, I'm pointing at Councilmember Cadu, because she's in your district, that she had addressed that with you, that you just weren't in compliance. So, I'm not sure if that's still the issue you were talking, because it was hard to follow. But if you would like to email me, once again, I'd be happy to take a look at it and, and see.
They don't vote. I say they may not.
That's okay. That's okay. Just send me, send me an email, and I'll, I'll look at that. I may not have a different answer for you. It may still be the same answer, that you're not in compliance. But, but please, please send it. That's okay. Let's see. Ms. Cavanaugh, you asked about expense reports, and yes, that is quite possible, because we actually submit expense reports when we do travel, and we don't, me as a councilperson, several of us up here, we don't travel all the time. None of us do. Mayor has certain responsibilities with Florida League of Cities, as well as now as the president of the Southwest Florida League of Cities. And then some of us that are on different, different organizations will travel, but it doesn't happen all the time, and it certainly doesn't happen monthly. And I think, and I think that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Cadu.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Alvarez, thank you for coming to speak tonight. We are not trying to give ourselves raises. We're, we're trying to put it on the ballot, so that it would be up to the people to decide if the council should receive a raise. And I'm sorry that you're disappointed in me, and it was not our city manager that said she drove here without a driver's license. It was me that said that, because I think that her action downstairs, shaking her fist, was unacceptable. And yes, it has been corrected, and yes, our city manager did send an apology to Ms. Cavanaugh. I hope that she's listening, because I know that she left. So, I'm sorry that you're disappointed, but it all has been addressed. Thank you for coming. The yacht club being out of control and taking out debt, we all here agree, and we've already stated that. So, next week at our committee of the whole meeting, it sounds like our city manager has instructed staff to give us a breakdown of how the costs have gotten and where we are with that. So, we're not moving forward with a $300 million yacht club at this time, where we're just showing how the, the cost has been escalating. Mr. Stoltz, you also talked about the yacht club and tearing down the building. I believe this had to do with FEMA and the 50, 50 rule, the 50% rule, so it had to go regardless. Thank you so much for your comments, though. And on the bridge, we can get with the county and the MPO on that, so I will make sure that we do that. If you want to send an email, we will get that to our Lee County Metropolitan Planning Organization, where we can discuss that with our county commissioners. And Hudson Creek, paying the impact fees, yes, they will. They will pay impact fees on that. Any, anything that goes out of the ground pays impact fees. Mr. McGrail, thank you so much for your comments and our very long conversations on the phone. ADUs, I think a lot of people don't realize this, in fact, I received a Facebook message this morning about it. This is coming from the state as well. It's House Bill 48 was filed, so we're, we're all going to have to pay attention to this and how it's all working. So, thank you for coming to speak. Ms. Fiallo, I just looked in my email. We emailed you back in September, so you, you need to check your emails. But everything was addressed in September, and your house was out of compliance, the hearing examiner found that it was out of compliance. I'm sorry that you feel like you're being harassed, but that is where we are. Our mayor suggested at the committee of the whole meeting that you get an attorney to, to address it. But I just looked in my email, we all received it, your house was out of compliance. You can continue to come and speak at Public Comment, that is your right, but we do have code for a reason. And also, yes, I know that you received your, your $35,000 UEP. As Mr. La Hamadu did state tonight, mine is $37,365 if I pay it before March 31st. So, we are all in this together. Julia, I know that you left, but hopefully you're listening. We are listening to the citizens. Maybe it's just not the answers that you want to hear. Mr. Haslett, I'm sorry, I don't know what your situation is. Thank you for coming, but your language is unacceptable for this quorum.
Oh, yes, ma'am, I appreciate that. No, ma'am, thank you very much. My, my treatment.
Sir, please have a seat.
My treatment by your.
Sir. Sir, this is, this is.
Understood.
I'm getting right now.
Mr. La Hamadu.
What did I say?
The UEP. As you know, we live on the same side of the street. I just live nine houses down from you, so of course I was shocked, because we have almost roughly 12,000 square foot lot each, my house and your house. And when I asked the city manager about this, and Mark Mason, it's because when they have certain areas, like yes, our frontage is not, but the way that they made it fair across the whole city was, and you can jump in and please correct me, but it's, they went by square footage of lot rather than frontage of lot to make it fair, because there's different people that have different shaped lots. Is that correct?
That is correct. I'm, I'll actually find, throughout the decades in doing UEPs, we've had some very good presentations done by law firms, and, and I think I've done some, some previous finance directors have done some, showing you the different assessment methodologies. One of them is front footage, one of them is square footage. There, there's all different ways of passing along the cost to the project. And when you look at, because of the amount of canals we have and the amount of like circle roads, where there's pie-shaped lots, some are, front footage is wide, some are front footage is narrow. Really, this, the size of the lot with the setbacks determines the size of the house that you could build.
Right.
And so, for our community, with as unique as it is with 400 miles of canals, the square footage methodology.
Was the best.
Was the best, the one that more normalizes the cost amongst all the different. We, I, there are actually presentations out there, we, I will find them and make sure you all have them, that can show you, just taking, you know, a $10 million, you know, and we had this street, if we use front linear footage, if we use square footage, all the different things to show you how, all of those are all legal ways to, to distribute the cost. It's really which one is the fairest for all of the people that are sharing the cost of that project. And so, I'll make sure we get that, and it's a, it's an easy answer. It's one that's been, you know, back when this started, was debated for many years, but more recently has not been an issue.
Sucks for us. That's all I have to say about that, it really does. I mean, we have the preserve, but we do have to pay more. And Ms. Cavanaugh, I hope you're listening, you are correct that the Bimini East project bids did close on 10/31. And I just want you to know, there's no funny business. Us on council have not received any of those bids. We don't know what's up, and it will be presented to all of us. So, as soon as we see that on our agenda, we will certainly reach out to you so that you can attend. Thank you.
Councilmember Lehman.
Yeah. Ms. Alvarez? Ms. Alvarez? If you could give me your, oh, no, I've got it right here. Mrs. Alvarez? If you could give me your email address, you were saying that J.C. Park is just a dirt pile. It's not. I get monthly updates, and I do forward them out to quite a few people. I have quite a few lists, quite a list of emails that I send the updates, so that you can see, but month by month, the progression of what is going on at J.C. Park. All right? If you could give me your address, your email address, I would appreciate it, and then I will be more than.
By your, pal, dirt.
No, ma'am. I've got pictures from every month that I get. In fact, I just got, I just sent out the ones from October. I just got the October 31st update today, and I sent it out probably to about seven or eight different people. And I have no.
Did you post it on Facebook?
Huh?
Did you post it on Facebook?
No, ma'am, I do not go on Facebook. I post it, I get it through my city email site, and then I forward it via email to whoever would like it. In fact, Marie Cavanaugh gets it, Karen Neese gets it, there are quite a few people, and I know, Dave, you do know who I'm talking about, Tony Karp gets it, anyone who wants it, I have no problem. Just give me your email address, and I will gladly forward it to you. When I get them at the end, you know, I usually get them within the first five days.
Can I get this information on the city's website?
Yes, you can.
I checked it out, it was there a couple of months ago. I was in this.
Please, this isn't a two-way conversation.
Okay.
You can get with the council member after the meeting, if you like.
Yeah.
Councilmember Kilring.
Yeah, just real quick, the gentleman who asked about Hudson Creek, just to elaborate on that, there is a state statute where the applicant can come in and request a special district be developed. Under that provision, and that's what they did ask for Hudson Creek, it gives them more control over their association into the future years. What it does also is creates a board after the fact, and that board, within that statute, has a discretion to self-govern, and that includes taxation. So, we saw that was coming down the road from them. We proactively discussed with them that that's not really something that this council could support. We also had the, the help of our state rep, Mike G. Lombardo, to help correct that situation. What we recommended them to, to use community development bonds, that practice, CDCs, and basically by doing that, we maintain control, we maintain the application of mobility or impact fees. So, we protected that right, and they agreed to that. So, we cut down on it off at the pass, and I like to thank the city manager and city attorney for bringing that out, because that's something that, that they were, were certainly trying to do. And although that they, they agreed that, in a side agreement, that they would be able to go ahead and do that in a different way, the statute can preclude that from happening. All they had to do is form that board, they could eradicate that side agreement. So, we protected the city in doing that. So, I just wanted to elaborate, and so you understood fully what was going on there. We're also trying to protect those mobility fees, because as we were talking about the expansion of Burn Store Road, some of our county commissioners were thinking that we could apply city mobility fees to that. That's not done in any other jurisdiction on, on county roads, and hasn't been, and we're going to stick to our bones on that one. So, I appreciate that for you for asking on that. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item 11, which is reports. Let me get that list here. Councilmember Cadu, report.
Thank you, Mayor. On Friday, October 24th, I attended the Industry Appreciation Awards, and I'm happy to report that there were quite a few Cape Coral businesses that won awards this year, which was super exciting. Cape Coral's on the map. And on Saturday, November 1st, I volunteered at the Guardian Angels for Special Populations Golf Tournament, where I saw Mr. Mason, thank you for golfing. Hopefully, you won. We did raise a bunch of money for the Free to Be Smith Center, so thank you for that. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Kilring.
October 23rd, went to the Leadership Program at Cape Coral, and they talked about psychological changes that affect your conditions and going forward, and your career choices. Very interesting, and that, that's a great get-together. October 23rd, I also went to the Rymon Cunningham Maria's Deli up on, it's actually just off Pine Island Road, and excellent, excellent cuisine there. Also attended on the 24th, the Industry Appreciation Awards, as Councilman Cadu had just discussed. Stopped in at the Drunk or Treat. That was an excellent event. Hats off to city manager, that thing was really well done and staff there, I think it was well attended, and just, just looked like a great opportunity for, for the kids in the city. On the 28th, local legislative public hearing, and just attended that. It was announced in that that we were going to get the additional seat, that they're going to be pushing that bill to get the additional seat on that review committee, and that would be based on the largest population. So, by default, at this point, we'll be getting that as long as we can get that bill passed. But it had supported up, of the group that was going to push it there. Let's see. October 28th, also went to the Cape Coral Republican Club. Mike G. presented there, did a nice talk, talked about the role of the representatives, and their only real requirement, their only job responsibility is passing a budget. But they do a lot of other things, and help us in getting some stuff done. Also, had a discussion with a couple commissioners on Burn Store Whining, and I'll save that for the COW meeting. On November 1st, with Mayor and Councilwoman Laster, attended the O.R.F. Services, remember, it's first of, hope many to come at the Cape Coral Museum. Mayor gave a proclamation there, and well done, and they did a real nice job in putting that together. Hats off to Charlie Pease, who emceed the event there, and did a real good job in organizing it. Also, November 1st, attended the Special Pops Golf Tournament. I went there for lunch, along with Mayor, and we had a good time. But no, it's very, very well done. I'd like to comment that all three unions really participated in contributing that, and they do every year, and I thank them for that. That's it, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Laster.
Thank you, Mayor. As Councilmember Kilring mentioned, I too attended with both of you, the Veterans Event that was at the military, I mean, at the History Museum, and it was beautiful. It was an honor to be there. Mr. City Manager, did you give any consideration of changing the location for the November 13th meeting from Public Works to here for the golf, old golf course?
I believe we discussed it with staff, and it had already been heavily advertised.
No, oh, so we're not going to change it, we're going to keep it?
I haven't been advised that they.
Got you. Okay. I just want to make sure. Okay. So, that will be happening then, November 13th, discussion of the old golf course. So, it'll be a public discussion. I hope many residents will come to give their input on what we want to see in the future. We have a youth council meeting next Friday. We'll be talking about our holiday project, where we are donating toys, anything for children from the age of zero to 11. And then, I wanted to just give a shout out and thank the city manager's office for taking on helping the teenagers. I appreciate that very much. Teenagers are a different beast, as we all know, and they like gift cards. So, I'm very appreciative of your staff for taking on that group. And I believe that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lehman, report.
No report.
Councilmember Long.
No report.
Councilmember Donnell.
Just want, a couple things. Number one, I wanted to thank all of the residents in the community in this past week, from 24th to 31st. People celebrated different things, the Harvest Fest, the Drunk or Treat, or whatever they do, Halloween, for those that participated. However, I do have a kid, there's one kid, I won't call his name, because I was trying to trick or treat, and he's like, "Mister, you're too old to trick or treat." So, I'm, he knows, I told him I was going to say this. So, other than that, it was a nice, it was just nice to see the community coming out, fellowshipping, having a good time. So, thank you for that, and keeping the children safe. But thinking about Children Council, and I'm looking at the mayor first, I wanted to get your permission and to the choir, the outlets from the care of Robinson Littleton, wanted to see if it'd be okay to come back and sing on the 10th. Mayor, I want to let you know, we've already solved that little issue we had, that we had about the security, but it'll be a lot smoother this year. But they're excited, and I would like to know if you all would be amenable to having them, and I'll get with the city attorney to make sure.
Those were the loud children in the hallway that we heard. I guess, okay.
Only if you, if you're going to sing with them.
They were loud.
Yes, they were. Is there, I didn't know how, if you all would be amenable to that.
Oh, yeah. Is there an issue with that?
No.
All right. All right. Thank you very much, and that's all.
We're going to hold you accountable again.
Yes, sir. Do that.
They're loud.
Fair enough.
Thank you very much. Yeah, real quickly, for me, I was a guest speaker at Tarpon, at the Convention Center at Tarpon, back on 10/27 for the Florida State Prima Conference. Also, I spoke at the annual Lee County Legislative Delegation Meeting to express what our council and city's legislative priorities are. So, I made sure that I got that message to them. Also, as a few of my colleagues has mentioned, we, I attended the hosting of the salute to our service and sacrifice for our veterans. It was a first annual event, it was a great event. Want to commend the. Want to commend the Cape Coral Museum of History of putting that on, and I'm sure there'll be many more to come. Also attended Special Pops events that Councilmember Kaduk mentioned. Try to go to that each and every year. It's a great event to raise money for a great service that they provide to our community. And lastly, I attended the WSIA Symposium at, at the Tarpin Conference Center on eleven-four. I was a guest speaker during that. Lastly, I just wanted to let everyone know, I had a fairly lengthy discussion today with Commissioner Ruane on a variety of topics, but mainly on Burnsthor Road. And he asked me to relay a message to our council and to the citizens of Cape Coral. He is our representative, our county, you know, he represents a majority of Cape Coral, which is in his district. And he assured me that Burnsthor Road widening and completion of the last segment is a priority that he has, a top priority. He's already reached out to some state representatives with FDOT. He has a variety of options that he explained to me today. Myself and our city manager tomorrow have a meeting with Commissioner Ruane and our county manager on a variety of topics, eight or nine different topics. That I will gladly come back to this body and explain how that conversation went. And Commissioner Ruane, you know, stated he wanted to work with, with us. He wanted to work with me and our city manager and with the county manager to try to find a resolution, not only for, you know, the Burnsthor widening. Also, they have listed that as a legislative priority, just like we have. We also talked about the I seventy-five exchange. That is something that they're looking at as well. So, I'm sure, and he also agreed to have monthly meetings to get updates on these topics. I look forward to that as well. So, I just wanted to mention that it is a concern to his. We did have that discussion today, and I know we will have many more to come. So, that's all I have. Mr. City Attorney, you have a report?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two things I'd like, well, first of all, I do have an answer to Councilwoman Kaduk's question about the budget. Would you like that now, or do you want us to send an email? We can do it now.
Emails.
Emails, okay? Okay, we'll do it by email. Secondly, I have, as I said, I was gonna start something new called the High Five Highlights. I wanna, tonight, I want to give a High Five Highlight to our Economic Development and Business Office. Yesterday, we brought in Select Florida, which is the state's agency that helps economic development, and specifically, we brought in the group that is involved from the state's agency with international trade, both imports and exports. And we lined up four of our manufacturers in the community to also go and take them to their businesses, and all of those businesses were excited and are going to make a serious effort and connection with Select Florida to try and get into international trade. As our local manufacturing businesses in Cape Coral grow, so does the jobs we have in the light manufacturing. And so, this just goes to highlight the great work that our economic development staff is doing. On top of that, this morning, they were able to arrange for the, a first-ever tech meetup in Cape Coral. And there were probably about twelve to fifteen tech entrepreneurs from all around Southwest Florida who came right here in Cape Coral to learn about what opportunities Cape Coral has to offer, whether it be in med tech, fintech, prop tech, property. So, if you don't know the acronyms, property technology, financial technology, medical technology, restaurant technology. And so, they are really pushing the limit, and it wasn't long ago that council agreed to expand what that office does, and so, very important to keep you up to date, and, and thank you to them. So, High Five Highlight to them. Then I have another announcement. So, during the budget discussions, I had mentioned to you all that I had a vision for how we would celebrate this, the July fourth anniversary next year, being the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. And I had initially requested that we put additional funding in the budget to do a, go above and beyond what we had planned, and that funding was not approved. However, council supported the idea of trying to get the tallest flagpole in the state of Florida, in the city of Cape Coral, through donations. I'm here tonight to tell you that we are gonna be launching that campaign tomorrow. It is gonna be called Raise the Flag. And it is going to be a project that symbolizes pride in our national flag, in our nation, and our community. It will be a community-driven project funded through donations. I encourage all residents, businesses, civic groups, veterans, and organizations to take part in this historic effort, just as the founding families and businesses did with the existing veterans monument that is on Cape Coral Parkway. As our nation celebrates two-hundred-and-fifty years of independence, next July twenty-fourth, July fourth, I would like to raise the flag in honor of the next two-hundred-and-fifty years in our, in our nation. Reminding future generations who we are as a nation and who we are as a community. So, with that, I have a couple of documents that I had the clerk pass around to you, and I'd like to have communications put up. So, we're gonna be sending out a press release. If you see the, the emblem a little bit to the bottom right there, let's see if we can. So, if you see that, that emblem, if you, you notice it's in a, in a round circular area, we intend on getting challenge coins that have America's two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday with the Raise the Flag, and on the back will be a two-hundred-and-fifty symbol for the two-hundred-and-fifty feet of the flag and the two-hundred-and-fifty-fiftieth anniversary of our nation. This press release will be going out. We do, we will be launching the website tomorrow, and we will be eligible to take donations beginning tomorrow. In addition to that, we have donor opportunities. We have a series of donor packages for anybody that is looking to participate. So, we have, on the website, we will have a link to, in order to be able to do that, we will also take donations through the clerk's office, and all of those are gonna go into a dedicated fund for this amount. And as, based on the amount of donation that any individual or business makes, we have various tiers, all the way up until, you know, logo placement at Red, White &amp; Boom, V.I.T., V.I.P. tickets at Sounds of Jazz, and tickets to Red, White &amp; Boom, along with name recognition on a monument recognizing the flag, all the way down to just having digital recognition on the website. So, the goal here is to come together as a community to fund this project, and we are hopeful that we can get to our target. The target still remains at five-hundred thousand. We did go out and receive some verbal quotes that had us in less than four-hundred thousand for the flag. However, we are gonna be looking for lighting, a paver promenade. We're gonna have to build the memorial and the plaque. And so, that would go into the extra costs unless businesses would like to donate in-kind services for electrical work, paver work, the, the plaque. And in working with Lee County on the bridge project, they were able to take the flagpole height and the size of the flag and actually come up with a rendering that is to scale to give you an idea of what this flag would look like as you come into the city of Cape Coral. So, with that, tomorrow, we will be announcing the Raise the Flag fundraising campaign. Thank you.
Didn't you miss, you missed one contribution, little one here? The city manager matching fund?
Just, just so you know, I already made my donation of a thousand dollars yesterday to make sure that everything worked and it was able to be accepted.
And we won't let anybody know that you told me to say that, so you could.
Thank you.
My company donated all paid for the memorial at Midpoint Prison.
The, the flagpole base is gonna, going to be about a six-foot diameter, and what we were thinking about was a six-foot ring, as you see, so about, even though it wouldn't be eighteen feet in diameter, it would be about a six-foot ring around it. Excellent. Thank you.
Mayor, I just have one question.
Sure.
City Manager, the, the meeting tomorrow morning, just the update on Seven Islands, is that gonna be a, is that in person? Okay.
Thank you. Is that all you have there, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate all your efforts. Time and place of future meeting, we have a committee, a Community Redevelopment Agency meeting scheduled for Wednesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty-five, beginning at nine AM in council chambers. And a committee of the whole is scheduled for Wednesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty-five, beginning at nine thirty here in council chambers. Just real quickly, why does it say nine thirty?
So, the CRA meeting starts at nine.
Oh, okay.
Then we have that one following.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.